If everyone can please take their seat.
We shouldn't say with mental reservation.
With mental?
Instead of without mental reservation.
I would like to call to order the Temple City Regular Meeting for March 4th, 2020. Can I get a roll call, please?
Councilmember Mann.
Here.
Councilmember Yu.
Here.
Councilmember Sternquist.
Here.
Mayor Protem Chavez.
Here.
Mayor Fish.
Here. Okay, I have a lot to say, so listen. First, we're going to have our invocation by Pastor John Ickney II. Ickney?
Icky.
Icky II will provide the invocation. Then remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance, which will be presented by our Scouts, Troop 181, Shauna H. Gold, Judy Liu, Brianna Tang, Samantha Lee, and Karen Wong. And then please also remain standing. We will have a special presentation singing of the National Anthem by Mrs. Beraldi. So right now, if you could please stand. Thank you.
By the way, it's wonderful to be back again. It's been about five years since I was in this chamber.
Hasn't changed much, has it?
Has it? Well, maybe it has a bit. It has a bit. It's wonderful to see you all again. Good to be back home.
Thank you.
Let's bow our heads for prayer. Lord God, thank you so much for the opportunity to be able to work together. Lord, give us unity. Give us wisdom. And thank you also for this time today as the mayor position continues to move forward. Lord, we ask that you give us a good heart, joy in our hearts, and the ability to do best for those around us. In your name, amen.
Amen.
Oh, okay. I guess LeAnn's gonna do the National Anthem first?
Yeah.
We're gonna do that without the flag?
Well, don't we do it first?
Okay. Sorry. Sir? [singing] Oh, say, can you see by the dawn's early light? What so brightly we hail at the twilight's last gleaming? Whose broad stripes and bright stars through the perilous fight? For the ramparts we watched were so gallantly streaming. And the rockets rippling, the bombs bursting in the galeproof through the night? Then our flag was still there. Oh, say, does that star-spangled banner yet wave? For the land of the free and the home of the brave?
Troop, attention! Color guard, please post the flag of the United States of America. Color guard, please post the flag of the great state of California. Will the audience please join me in reciting the Pledge of Allegiance? Ready, begin.
[singing] The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Two. Color guard, dismiss. The audience may leave.
[applause]
There is a lot of girls singing. Girl boy scouts.
Yeah.
Okay, we're gonna be moving on to item five. Ceremonial matters presentations. Oath of office to appointed councilmembers Nanette Fish, William Mann, and Cynthia Sternquist.
I would like to invite Councilmember Fish, Councilmember Mann, and Councilmember Sternquist to come up in front of the dais for our ceremonial oath of office. And if I can, I'd like to invite Captain Flores to come up to the dais and give the ceremonial oath of office.
I take the oath.
I, Cynthia Sternquist.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States.
I support and defend the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California against all enemies foreign and innocent.
And the Constitution of the State of California against all enemies foreign and innocent.
That I will bear true faith.
That I will bear true faith.
And allegiance.
And allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation or purpose of deviation.
Without any mental reservation or purpose of deviation.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
The duties upon which I'm about to enter.
The duties upon which I am about to enter.
And that will...
Thank you.
[applause]
Okay. That was fun.
Yes.
I get to say a few words before we get this done. First, I'd like to say what an honor and a privilege it was this year to represent the great city of Temple City. Being mayor, you are the face of the city, but there are many, many people that support you, that look out for you, and that make sure that this city runs smoothly and that our residents are our greatest priority. I have many people to thank, but I know we have a party next door, and I know Tom hasn't even started talking yet, and when he does...
[laughing] I knew that was gonna come.
I know. So, first, I would like to start off by thanking two ladies that work behind the scenes, and I can tell you that they have been so helpful to me, and that is our city clerk, Peggy Coe. And please come up. And also, Iliana Flores. We are very, very fortunate in the city to have the two of you, and I just wanted to personally say that it's been a great year, and with your support and guidance, you're always looking out for me, you're always looking out for the council, and I just can't say enough. So, thank you very much. Thank you, ladies. Thank you. Cheers. Thank you. Get right. Get right. Next, I'd like to thank a couple of gentlemen who actually keep me in line and the council. That is our city attorney, Greg Murphy. And of course, our city manager, Brian Cook. These two gentlemen are true professionals. I can tell you, whenever there's a question, any time of the night or day, weekends, holidays, they are there to answer them. And if you've ever been an elected official, that's when things happen. They happen at 11 o'clock at night or on a Sunday afternoon, and, you know, you have to get a hold of somebody. So, I can't thank these two gentlemen enough. So, thank you very much. Next, of course, I have my colleagues. I was very, very honored to serve with a council of mayors. Every person on here has been a mayor. They've all been very, very supportive. I'm the last one, so now you can say that your council is all mayors. I don't think there's a lot of councils out there that can say that. Now, we've all experienced it. We know what it is. We know the work it takes. So, I'm gonna just kind of individually say just a few words. Councilmember Mann, I just wanted to say you've been so kind this year, and you've helped me so much, especially with the Asian community. In case you don't know, Councilmember Mann and I went to Taiwan this last November, and it was so nice to have him with me. He was able to tell me a lot of the traditions, a lot of the food, and just everything about that country. I don't know if you know, but his mother's from that country, so it worked out really well that the two of us went. He's also helped me in so many other areas, and I'm just proud to say that you're my friend, and thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, I have Councilmember Vincent Yu. Vincent, you've always been a great supporter of me, and I have to say with your experience with the county, it is so helpful. I listen to you. You bring up things that I've sometimes have not thought about. And we do deal with the county very closely, and sometimes we have to remember that the county is not Temple City, that they do things a little bit differently than we do here. So, I'm always glad that you're here, that you're available for questions, and that, again, that you support me, and, of course, your experience. So, thank you very much, Vincent.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Next, I have my partner in crime, Cynthia Sternquist. She has been my friend and my mentor for many years. Her and I started on the Parks and Recreation Department many years ago, 15 to say the least. She taught me about local government. She taught me how to run a meeting. She taught me how to research. I've learned so many things from her. She was also very, very instrumental in me running for council. I didn't want to do it, didn't think I could do it, was scared to death, and she kept saying, "Why not? What's the worst thing that's gonna happen? You're not gonna win the election." I said, "Well, I can do that." I could not win an election. She said, "Do it, Mann. Do it. It's a great experience. You love Temple City. You've been here for 30 years." Why wouldn't she do it? So, I have to say thank you so much. And of course, thank you for being my friend. It's been a great year. Thank you. And last but not least, Mayor Protem Chavez.
We could save a little time by just not saying anything about me. No, go ahead.
Mayor Protem is our devil's advocate, which is great. Sometimes we don't always want to hear that because we want to make a decision, and, you know, he'll say, "What? Don't forget. How about this? How about that?" It's like, "Oh, you're right, Tom. You're right. We get it. Your legal experience has been priceless." Again, sometimes we don't want to hear it, but you know what? That's what keeps our community great. We have five great people, five different backgrounds, and we all love Temple City. So, Tom, thank you so much.
You're welcome.
We appreciate it.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Just a couple more. I'd like those of you that are residents to really realize that we have an amazing staff. We are so lucky that these people are dedicated and compassionate, that their number-one thing is to help our residents, and I don't know if you've gone to other city halls. I have, and they're not always like that. So, I'd like to thank the staff, not only for helping us and helping me, but helping our residents, and always being kind and considerate and professional. So, I think there's a few staff members in here. I would just like to thank all of you. So, thank you. To our residents, again, thank you so much for giving me this opportunity. It's been an amazing opportunity. I never in a million years thought that I would be up here. I never thought I would be on city council. I never thought I would be mayor. But I'm so glad I did it, and it just, you know, it just proves that if you want to do something, you can do it. You can do it. You can strive to do it. I'm not a public speaker. I was not, you know, in any way preparing myself to do this. It kind of fell in my lap, again, with great encouragement, but I can honest you say, it has been the best experience of my life. So, again, to the residents, thank you so much. I appreciate it, and I will continue to make you all a priority. Thank you. And then lastly, to my family, my children, and my friends, you've supported me through this five-year journey and through this last year as mayor. I haven't always been available to do things because I have been mayor, so please be patient with me. I'm hoping I'm gonna get a little bit of time back this coming year. To my children, thank you so much for coming. Thank you for supporting me. I love you. You guys, you know, you have to put up with me. I'm sorry. So, thank you so much. And my friends, of course, there's so many people out in the audience I see that I've known for many, many years, and it's a wonderful thing. It's a wonderful thing to see your friends here supporting you. And the only other person I can thank is the Lord, because he's done all of this for me. So, again, thank you very much, and thank you for coming tonight. Thank you.
Okay, so at this time, we have a special presentation to make to Mayor Fish, and so if I could ask all the councilmembers to please join me down in front, and we'll make that presentation.
So, Mann, on behalf of the city council, we'd like to present to you, of course, some beautiful flowers here. And of course, what would an outgoing mayor be without her own gavel? So, we have your gavel to take with you, and so congratulations for a job well done and for a great year. And of course, now that you're gonna be on the council for at least another four years, we look forward to that as well. So, congratulations, and that's for you.
I wish I could see. Okay, now I would like to welcome comments from other city or elected officials to outgoing mayor. I guess that's me. I know we have...
I think we have several elected officials, if you want to come on up to the podium and make your presentations.
Hello, Maggie. Mayor, it's council of the city of Temple City. I'm Jason Hoog, and the city of San Gabriel. Hopefully, I'm a good neighbor. And congratulations to the other councilmembers, all of you, who have earned yourself another term. Looking forward to working with all of you as you continue this journey in public service. I think I'm, just as a fellow mayor, would like to say, and as everybody here who's served as mayor, it just takes such a tremendous amount of time and energy, and it really is, you know, a labor of love, you know? It's about heart and soul, and I think that many times, many times, that's taken for granted. So, I wanted to say, you know, that those of us who have had the pleasure and honor of carrying that role, we know that it's not always easy, but it is very rewarding, and leadership does make a difference. And so, congratulations on another great year. Looking forward to working with you further as, you know, we continue this journey. And I would like to present this certificate to outgoing mayor Nanette Fish for her year of service as mayor, and hopefully will be able to serve as mayor again sometime in the future.
Yes, I was gonna say, yeah. I'm Maggie Clark. I'm mayor in Rosemead, and I am going to copy your speech in a couple of weeks when I step down, because you did a fantastic job. You have such a wonderful support group here, and Nanette's been a wonderful mayor. I've just enjoyed so much being with you and seeing all the good things you're doing. So, from the city of Rosemead, I want to present you with this.
Hello. [laughing] Sorry. My name is Miley Plan from Congresswoman Judy Chu's office, and first, we want to congratulate you for a fantastic job as mayor, and I also want to thank you for all the hard work that you've put in. It's incredibly clear from this room, from all the community events that I've seen you at, which you've been at everywhere. You have so much love and respect from the community, and they also came together and nominated you as our Congressional Woman of the Year in 2017, so we were especially happy to give you that award. So, again, congratulations. We're looking forward to working with you some more. And on behalf of Congresswoman Judy Chu, we'd like to present a certificate of congressional recognition. Thank you.
Hi, my name's Edward Brown. I'm from Senator Susan Rubio's office. You know, I think other people have said, you know, basically what I was gonna say, but I will say that the senator did want me to say something to the residents, is that, you know, her relationship with this council has been, you know, incredible, not only because it's the first year at the California State Senate and that she obviously wants to help the residents of Temple City, but more importantly is that the feedback from this council has been tremendous, and she has relied on the councilmembers, individual councilmembers, and on staff. And I know when she's, when she has ever needed something, especially even, you know, you were talking about, you know, late nights, you know, information that helps her, helps the residents of Temple City, this council and city staff have always been there, and she appreciates that, and it's obviously based on leadership, and so she obviously intends for this to move forward and just get better. So, on behalf of the California State Senate, it's my privilege to present you with this certificate in recognition of your outstanding leadership. I commend your commitment to our residents and thank you for your invaluable contributions. Thank you.
Hello, everyone. My name's Abigail Marquez, and I'm with the Office of Assemblymember at Chow, and since I'm the last person, I will be brief, I promise. I am so honored here to present this certificate to you, Mayor Fish. You have set such a high bar for the council, for your city workers, and you've just, you've been amazing, and it's been amazing to work with you, and we look forward to continuing to work with you and this awesome city council. You guys are great. I always say how much I love Temple City, and let me say it again, I love Temple City. So, on behalf of the 49th Assembly District, let me present the certificate of appreciation for your dedication and your service for advocating on behalf of the residents of Temple City.
Okay, and as Mayor Fish comes back to the dais, we do have one other certificate of recognition that was presented to us from the city of Monrovia.
Yes.
And so, they would like to thank Mayor Fish for her outstanding leadership and distinguished service to the community, and it's signed by all five councilmembers, none of which I can read their signatures, but they're all there. So, thank you from the city of Monrovia for that.
Thank you.
You're very welcome.
In my thank yous, I forgot to thank, of course, all of our neighboring cities. I know we have the mayors from the... We work very well together. We really do try to support each other. I know most of you know that we go to a lot of conferences together, and we do a lot of networking, and it is so good to be friends with our neighbors and to find out what's working in their communities, what's not working. And I have to tell you, sharing ideas, it's, we all want each other to succeed. We all do. We go to these conferences, and we talk about what's going on, and we're, you know, there is a little friendly competition, of course, and we all think our cities are the best, because that's the way it is. But again, I just wanted to thank our mayors that came, and then, of course, Congress, our Congress, our Senate. Again, we work so well together. Again, we work so well together. We are very, very lucky in this community. So, thank you. Okay, moving on to item four. City Clerk calls for nominations for seat of mayor.
Thank you, Mayor Fish. I'd like to call for nomination for the seat of the mayor.
I'd like to nominate Tom Chavez, Mayor Pro Tem, for the position of mayor.
Are there any other nominations? Hearing none, can I have a second to the nomination from Councilmember Sternquist? Hearing no other nominations and having a second from Councilmember Yu, I'd like to congratulate Mayor Pro Tem Chavez to the seat of mayor by acclamation.
This is a ceremonial change of seats, so stay with us. We don't have to go very far.
No, we don't.
Okay. Well, thank you. We have about, I told myself we're going to get out of here by 8:15 or 8:20 at the latest, so we're going to move. So I would now call for nominations for the seat of Mayor Pro Tem.
I'd like to nominate Councilmember Vincent Yu for the seat of Mayor Pro Tem.
Okay, do we have a second nomination?
A second?
No, second nomination.
Oh, sorry.
Sorry, we get excited.
That's okay. And therefore, if, since we don't have a second nomination, do we have a second to the first nomination? You're all keeping track of that, right? Okay.
I'll second that.
Thank you. Okay, Madam Clerk.
Hearing no other nomination for the seat of Mayor Pro Tem, Mayor Pro Tem Yu, you're seated as the new Mayor Pro Tem by acclamation.
Thank you.
Okay, so we're all going to come up again to the front, because we have some presentations to the new mayor and to our new Mayor Pro Tem. So if we could have the entire council once again come up to the front. It's sort of like church, you kind of get up and down, right? Right Pastor?
Okay, so this is, of course, to our new mayor, Tom Chavez. I know, this is for you.
This is big, this is big film.
And I just want to say, this is, I know this is kind of funny, but we do this, obviously, every year. And I always say, if you're giving me something, don't give me a plant, because I'm going to give you fresh water. Thank you for my fresh water. Good luck with the plant. That's all I can say.
I'll give this to Jane, so she'll... The gavel's for me. Why don't you guys get in here? Well, you know, before we do that, why don't I go ahead and present his own plant to our Mayor Pro Tem, so we each get a plant.
It's like a joke. I didn't sit in the wrong seat. Aren't you proud of me?
Okay. Okay, so... Are there any other, any in the audience that would like to speak now regarding our new appointments? In other words, this is the time you get to either congratulate or complain, one or the other, I don't know. Now, Steve, why don't we save yours for public comments, if you don't mind? Is that okay? Do you want to do that? Maggie, did you have something? Did you want to present? Okay, yeah, any presentations, come on up and we'll do that again.
I think it's kind of funny that you weren't actually elected mayor when we prepared this.
Say that again?
I think it's kind of funny that you weren't elected mayor.
Uh huh. Does it have my name on it?
It does.
Wow.
Wow, that's amazing!
Good, good fortune telling there, I guess. Thank you.
I've really enjoyed working so much, so long with so many of you here. And Tom and I go way back, and it's been wonderful. I'm so glad you don't have term limits and we don't either. So I'm looking forward to...
We do now.
What's that?
We do now.
Oh, you do?
Yeah.
Just longer term, so we'll talk about that later.
We'll talk about that later, Mayor. You do, that's right. I guess you got under the rug or something, I don't know. Anyway, I look forward to working with you.
Well, thank you.
Really appreciate all your service over these years.
Well, thank you very much, I appreciate you being... Oh, you have a...
We have something for you. We have something for you.
Just want to say congratulations, Mayor Chavez. I think the first time we met was the last time we both served as mayor together. And we'll be doing our own reorganization near the end of April, so it won't be as much of an overlap this time. Hopefully, it won't be too eventful, but you never know, we might have some other, you know, reasons that we'll need to get together. So if there's anything you'll ever need, always feel free to reach out. All right, thank you.
Hello, once again, my name's Edward Barrera from Senator Susan Rubio's office. Mayor Pro Tem, I also have a certificate for you. While he's coming up here, I will add this one thing, once again, primarily for the residents, anybody watching, is that I had a conversation last night, obviously it was election night, and people were talking about all these different cities. And I, and I, and I used the City of Temple City as an example of how things should, you know, should be run, and so often or not. You know, I've seen disagreements up here, civil disagreements, you know, always trying to reach a consensus. And that's what leadership is supposed to be, supposed to be like. Now that I know that everyone's been a mayor here, it just, you know, it makes complete sense. So, so from the, from the, from the Senator Rubio, for Mayor Pro Tem Yu, on behalf of California Senate, it's my honor to present you with this certificate. I commend you for your commitment and leadership in our community, and look forward to working with you in the coming year. For Mayor Chavez, I commend you for your commitment and leadership in our community, and look forward to working with you for the future for our shared constituents.
So just so we're clear that there are no violations of the Brown Act, all of them brought their certificates blank and then filled in the name as soon as we were able to make sure that... Just want to make sure that's clear. Okay. Okay, so any council member comment? Now is the time for our colleagues up here to share their brief thoughts, if you'd like. And Councilmember Nan, do you want to start?
Yes, thank you. Thank you, Mayor Chavez. See, every year, we have to get used to new titles. But for Nan, thank you for your amazing leadership last year. It's been a tremendous journey. I know we both got on council at the same time, so...
Yes, we did.
We've gone through that experience together, so thank you for that. And congratulations to Mayor Chavez. When we were first elected, you were mayor.
Yes, yes.
This kind of starts the cycle again, and looking forward to the upcoming journey with you as well.
Thank you. Okay. Mayor Pro Tem Yu.
Jeez, this is going to be hard.
Get a little hard to get used to. I want to take this opportunity to really thank former Mayor Fish. Not only for your leadership, we know each other for a long time, starting the days when you were running the communal festival and when you won a commission. And I really enjoyed, but more importantly, I was very, very impressed with your love and dedication and compassion for the cities. I think it really shows in the way you've been working last year, so I want to thank you for that.
Thank you.
I also want to take this opportunity to congratulate all three of you for four new, four more years on the city council. And I'm sure under your guidance, the city will run very, very well. Want to take this opportunity to congratulate Mayor Chavez. Much like Congressman William Mann and our former Mayor Fish, we actually came into the city as commissioners together, albeit different commissions. And we were elected to the city council together as well. So looking forward to working with you again. Again, I'm very impressed with your professionalism. And if some of you have said in some of our meetings, and especially when it comes to legal stuff, you will always see me before I make a final decision. I will always ask, "Tom, what do you think?" You know, it's so good to have a lawyer on the city council, and he can slice and dice all the issues. So thank you so much for that, and looking forward to the coming years working with you.
Thank you, Vince. Councilmember Sternquist, we go back to...
A long time, a long time. I'd just like to thank our mayor, our... Not old mayor, our former mayor.
Don't want to say old mayor.
Don't let us say old, no.
You know, it's really nice to have another female on the council with you. For my first term, I was the only woman, and there were so many men, city attorneys, city manager, all the council members. And actually, the biggest challenge with having Nan was really trying to figure out what we were going to wear to an event. Which was really quite fun, because we tend to have similar tastes, and if we were ever shopping together, we both pick up something that looks identical. So that has really been fun. But I just want to thank you so much for your leadership and for being such a great example to the young women in our community. And just, you've done such a great job. You really, she really didn't need me for anything other than to ask, "What are you wearing tonight?" So I want to...
I don't know.
I want to congratulate you on that. And Tom, it's always been a pleasure to serve with Tom, because I think of all my council members, Tom and I probably, if you want to use the word bicker, it's probably Tom and I and my colleagues would agree that do that. And we always have, but I think we totally respect one another. And I finally figured it out, Tom. It's because I think in my other life, I wanted to be an attorney.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, so, so that's probably why. But I have served with Tom as mayor two times, right? And so I welcome him as mayor. I know he'll do an exceptional job, and he's very dedicated to this community. So congratulations, Tom.
Well, thank you very much, I appreciate the time. So now it comes to me. I promised to be brief. But you know, a brief with lawyers is usually about 300 pages, right?
Yeah, good luck, good luck.
You know, being a politician, an attorney, and a law professor, I don't know if being brief is in my DNA, but I will do my best, I promise. We're going to get you guys out of here and get you next door. But, you know, there are a few people, of course, that I'd like to thank. You know, one doesn't get to this position, of course, without the help of many, many people. There's no question about that. And, you know, when I think about it, of course, I'm, I feel humbled and honored and privileged, as we've all set up here to be in this position. And, you know, it's just, even in a small city as ours, it really makes a difference. It's nice to know that you make a difference, and I think that's what we try to do up here on the dais if we can. Of course, I want to thank my colleagues. You know, I want to thank them, of course, for the trust and confidence they have in me to serve as mayor again. You know, one of the nice things of being in local politics is we don't have to be partisans. We can, we can all share the same goal. And that, of course, is to make Temple City a great place to live, a great place to work, a great place to play. And as noted earlier, you know, we do disagree from time to time, but we're not disagreeable. And as Mayor Fish stated in her State of the City address, you know, it's all about respect. And I think we do have that up here on the dais, and certainly it helps make our job a lot easier. Obviously, City Manager Brian Cook, our city manager, he's like the CEO, but without the pay. Right? Okay, but, all right. But I know, are you coming up for review soon? Maybe I don't know. Okay. But, you know, it's a 24/7, a 24/7 job, working as city manager. And one of the nice things about having Brian as our city manager is he truly loves the City of Temple City. And it shows, and he does a fantastic job. Our city attorney, Greg Murphy, you know, it's going to be difficult for one attorney to give another attorney advice. And that can be challenging at times, but Greg does it, of course, with professionalism. And what I like about Greg is he doesn't use all that legalese, which is helpful to me as well. But one of the things that people don't realize, though, is Greg's father works in my building. And I see his, I see his father quite often, and he's always asking me, "How's that kid doing?" And, you know, I'm thinking, "Oh, the kid's doing pretty well." You know, I always make sure that he knows it. But, you know, it's nice, because I know he's very proud of you, and he has every reason to be. So I'll probably see him tomorrow and let him know how you did it, okay? So it'll be okay. City Clerk, of course, Peggy Quill, our Assistant City Clerk, Jillian. Is Jillian still here? Somewhere around there, okay, there she is. Of course, they're the ones that keep us in compliance, and I want to thank them, of course, for the special work they do with our youth committee as well. They do go above and beyond, so... Special thanks to Iliana, sitting over here, Iliana waved to everybody. Iliana and Millie were the ones responsible for the great reception that we're going to go to in a few minutes, so thank you so much for doing that. And of course, I would be remiss, if I weren't, to thank all the people at City Hall. You know, it's, as Vince said, we've been here for 11 years now. I can't believe it's been 11 years. And, you know, it's been a privilege and an honor to work with the people at City Hall. They're great people. I truly consider them my friends, you know, and it's one of those kind of things where you can walk in and say hi, and they really make our job easier. So thank you, those who are here from their city, for making, making our lives a lot easier. Now, speaking of friends, I have to tell you that sitting right over there in that little section, raise your hand, guys, you know who I'm talking about. Those are my best friends from high school.
Wow.
Okay? We have known each other for over 50 years. You can tell by the gray hair, right? Except some of us don't have hair anymore, so maybe that's even... But, you know, it's, it's pretty amazing to think about that. And we, you know, we have, actually, and I'm fortunate that we all have a special relationship with each other. We've come a long way since Sierra Vista High and Balden Park, haven't we? It's, it's amazing to think the travels that we've been through. But, you know, I'm very proud of all of them. They've all had successful careers in their own lives. So to Randy, although I call him Fritsch, Ben, Eddie, Gary, and Ranny Lorraine, thank you so much. I love you guys, and thank you so much for being here. And it really means a lot. And I wrote down something real quick, and this is for my son Evan, because Evan's, you know, the writer in our family. And he shared with me a quote by Kurt Vonnegut. I don't know if you've ever heard of Kurt Vonnegut before, but writer. He said something that's kind of... that's kind of apropos to this situation. He said, "True terror is to wake up one morning and discover that your high school class is running the country."
Wow.
So hopefully, you know, that's, that will work out.
I like that. I'm going to have to remember that.
Now, of course, all the other friends, and I consider everybody in this room truly a friend, and, you know, one of the best perks of being up in this position and being an elected official is all the people we get to meet, and all the great people we get to meet. I think back, and, you know, I think to myself, "Well, I would have never known them had I not been involved here," that, and it's just amazing. And I just want to tell all of you that I'm so grateful for all your support and friendship. Jerry Jambezi, and of course, our city historian. We're in for a busy year, aren't we, Jerry?
207 bets.
Yeah, it's going to be a lot. So thank you for being here and always being there for us. Gary Stewart, my lunch buddy standing over there, I'm going to embarrass him, but he's... Raise your hand, Gary. You know, there he is. Gary and I are another lawyer. There are a lot of lawyers in this building. There's even a judge, so we have to be, we have to be nice. But, you know, we have some good times and some good talks, so thank you, Gary, for being here. I even have some students from PCC here, believe it or not, so they're used to hearing me talk, because I get up in front of them and it's talk, talk, talk. But thank you to the students who decided to attend, and I didn't even bribe them with giving them extra credit to be here, so that's pretty cool. My neighbors in the back. You know, one of the nice things about being in Temple City is the fact that we know all of our neighbors. We really do. I mean, I think all of us up here know our neighbors, and what a, what a great place to live, where you can talk to your neighbors, know them by first name, go to parties, and just hang out with them, and watch over each other, and that, I think, is one of the strengths of Temple City. So thank you for my neighbors for being here. As I mentioned, we have Judge, Judge, Judd Morris. Say that 10 times real quick. Judd, Judd. Where's Judge? Where's Judd? There he is, over there with his lovely wife Cheryl. You know, Judge Morris and I go way back, of course, and we actually got reacquainted a few weeks ago at Temple City High. We were volunteering for an event there, and I thank you for coming, and he told me he wants to get more involved, so you've got to be careful about that. We're going to get you involved, so thank you for coming tonight as well. And of course, all the representatives who hear from our elected officials, thank you so much for taking the time. I want to acknowledge some special persons, I'm almost done, our commissioners, our commissioners here, you know, we have several commissions in the city, they're the ones who do all the heavy lifting, they're the ones who volunteer, they're what you call our unsung heroes, and so, of course, thank you so much for all the work that you've done. Those beautiful young people in the back with those blue shirts on, stand up, you guys, please. Those are our members of our youth committee, okay? All right, you can sit down. They're the very special young men and women who recognize the importance of community service, and I'm very proud of them, and they've done a fantastic job in helping the council. We have members of Australian Sister City. I got Nancy and Steve sitting right here in front of me. Thank you for coming, Sam. Leanne, thank you, of course, they do a great job with our sister city program. I know we have, and I think, I hope I didn't miss anybody, I know we have one of our Temple City Unified School District Board members, Donna Giorgino, Donna, I think is here, right? Donna's here. Thank you for coming, Donna, I appreciate it. You know, our, as you probably know, most of you who live here, our schools are really one of our strongest assets, and many people move here because of our schools, and of course, it's worked for people like Donna and the rest of the school board, and of course, our superintendent, Kim Fricker, that make it so. So thank you so much for coming. Our Sheriff Department, represented, of course, by Captain Dave Flores. You know, one of the nice things about Captain Dave Flores is that he actually comes to all the events. I mean, he really does. He doesn't live here, he actually lives kind of ways away.
Sure.
And, but he gets here, and he does a fantastic job. Hopefully, we'll hold on to him for a while. It seems that whenever we get a good captain, we lose them, but hopefully, he'll be here for a while. And of course, Sergeant Miranda, Ron's is here, and of course, Deputy Chico. Where's Ron? Lamb couldn't make it tonight, huh? Okay, so thank you, guys. How about giving them a big hand for what they do? And of course, our former captain, Carone Jacobs, where's Carone? Carone's sitting here, thank you for coming. See, they can't leave Temple City, right?
Yeah.
Can't leave Temple City, so, you know, thank you for all the things that you do in keeping our city a safe place, of course. I don't think, is there anybody here from our fire station, Fire Station 47? You know, Fire Station 47, if we need help, all we've got to do is yell out the back door.
And we did.
Because we've done that a couple of times, too. They've come, and they've come in here, and they've saved a couple of lives, actually, so it's always nice. You know, it's so convenient to have both a sheriff's station and a fire station in our city, and, you know, our citizens, of course, are lucky to have that. At the end of the day, of course, it comes down to family. You know, I'm truly blessed to be surrounded by a loving and supportive family. I think all of us enjoy that up here, and it helps make our job a lot easier, of course. And as Nan mentioned earlier, you know, the time commitments to being on the City Council are truly great. They take away a lot of precious moments that we would otherwise, of course, be sharing with our family, and for that, you know, we are so indebted, of course, and I think, to me, that's the most difficult thing in being an elected official, is the time taken away, not only at our meetings, but other events that we need to be at. So obviously, our family are very special. Tonight, I have my sister Linda's here, and her husband Shannon, thank you very much. I love you guys. Thank you for coming. I think my brother was supposed to be here, but I don't know if he may be outside, I don't know. But, you know, it's been an honor being your big brother. I don't want to say your older brother, your big brother, okay? So thank you very much. You know, it's been tough in our family, you know, we've lost our father, our mother, and our stepmom in the last couple of years, and of course, you know, we all go through those kind of things, and it's nice to have family members that you can count on, of My son Sean, who is here tonight, he has started his own career in local government, working for the city of Glendale, and he's been very successful, and of course, Jane and I are so very proud of him and what he's done so far. He got smart. He was going to go to law school, and then he decided, "No, this is not for me." That was probably the wise decision, so it's actually turned out to be a very good decision, because what he's doing now is fantastic. And of course, as I mentioned before, he is my Iron Man triathlete, so running an Iron Man triathlon is, is pretty tough, and so, of course, we're very proud of him. My other son Evan couldn't be here, of course, he is, he didn't listen to me, he's actually in law school. And he, he's actually graduating in May, so we're all looking forward to him returning home and passing the bar and hopefully practicing law one day. Of course, representing him is his fiancee, Crystal, so Crystal, thank you for coming this evening, and I know that Evan, I think Evan is watching it online, so I told him to stream it online, so we're looking forward to you coming home, Ev, so see you soon. Okay.
Go ahead.
All right.
Don't cry.
So, yeah, I can't cry. I'll try now. I wouldn't. So 45 years ago...
It's like I know where it's going, that's why it's like, don't cry.
No, 45 years ago, I saw this beautiful young girl walking on the beach in Seal Beach, and I worked up enough nerve to go talk to her, which was way out of my character, because there's no way I should have done that. But I did. I don't know, maybe there was somebody telling me something that, "You've got to go talk to that girl." And I did, and of course, the rest is history. I can't believe it's been 45 years. It goes by so fast, doesn't it? You know, life hasn't been perfect for Jane and I, but, you know, life rarely is. But, you know, one of the constant things in our family, of course, is that Jane has always been there for not only me, for our boys, and, you know, it's safe to say that she is our rock, okay? You know, she's the strongest person I know, that's for sure. You know, it's been a difficult last year, health-wise, for our family, but Jane has remained strong and positive, of course, much stronger than I could ever be, and, you know, it... I don't know what to tell you, but other than that, whatever successes that I have in life, okay, they're because of you. Okay, I want you to know that. And this is for my high school buddies, okay? Here's a test, quick test. What is this line from? What song? "You are the best thing that ever happened to me." Ben, what is that? Who sang that? "You are the best thing that ever happened to me." Gladys Knight and the Pips.
Ah.
Right? We listen to that song all the time, Gladys Knight.
I know the song.
You know the song, I know. You want to sing it, though, sing.
The Pips are old.
Yeah, there you go. So I love you, and I want to say that in public so that you never forget it, okay?
Let's record it.
Huh? Gladys Knight and the Pips, you got it. That's it, okay. So, I've got to get up.
Okay.
All right. And of course, those who know Jane know that her favorite flower are tulips, and so I have these tulips to present to my wife, so.
Are we still here? Gosh, okay.
Okay. All right, well, we're a little behind, but I'm done. Okay. So thank you for bearing with me, all of you. Now, because this is an official meeting, we have some official business to take care of, and so we're going to do that, but that shouldn't take us very long. Now, just so that I can, a reminder, everyone who is in here, we do have our reception next door, okay? We have a lot of food and drink, and so you're all welcome to come and enjoy yourselves, stay as long as you want, but keep in mind, we do have a 10 o'clock curfew, I think, but you can enjoy yourselves for that amount of time. So we will now move on to item six, which are our public comments. Anybody from the audience wish to get up? Steve, you want to come on up?
Mayor Chavez, Mayor Pro Tem U, I'd like to say to the former mayor, Nanette Fish, you are a great mayor. You had a lot of care in your heart. You really respected everybody, no matter what. You know, you really made a difference when you were there a year. It was a year that I loved the best, growing up in this community. You did an awesome job, you did such a great job. You know, it's like, totally awesome how you performed there. And I remember about six months before that, there were people absent, you had to step into the mayor's chair. I'll never forget that. I could see you a little scared, but you did an awesome job, you know? And when you had to take the chair, you already knew what to do, and it's like, you took the challenge on and you performed awesome. Thank you.
Thank you, Steve.
Thank you.
Okay, anybody else? I think that's the first time Steve has ever got an ovation, so I think he's probably come to these more often. You got it, Steve?
[laughing]
All right. Okay, so I will close public comments. We'll now move on to our consent calendar. Do we have a motion?
Make a motion.
Okay.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Anybody opposed?
Was that motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Thank you. We have a second. Anybody opposed? Hearing none, that motion will pass. We will now move on to item number eight, which is our public hearing, none, unfinished business, none, new business, none. See how we're really going through this, huh?
Woo-hoo.
It's always nice to have that. An update from city manager.
Very briefly, Mayor Chavez, former Mayor Fish, thank you for the last year, and congratulations, Mayor Pro Tem U and Mayor Chavez. Look forward to working with you.
Well, thank you.
So are.
All right, great. Update from our city attorney.
None tonight.
Well spoken. See, that's the first time you ever see an attorney not say anything, right? All right. Okay. Item number 13, council reports regarding ad hoc or standing committee meetings. Do we have any reports this evening?
Uh-uh.
Okay, hearing none. We will now move on to item number 14, council items separate from the city manager's regular agenda. Councilmember Mann, do you have anything to add?
None tonight.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Sternquist.
Let's go to the party.
Let's go to the party, thank you. Councilmember Fish?
I agree.
All right.
Let's get over there.
And Mayor Pro Tem U?
Mr. Mayor, I think I said enough.
Thank you. I think we've all said enough, so I have nothing further to add either. And this is, any additional public comments? Not seeing anybody rushing to the podium.[1748.21]